Well, it's seven o'clock. I guess we can get started. So let me read the introduction, folks. So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight? As far as we know, is Woody going to be with us?
I haven't heard otherwise. I think he's probably just a little late joining.
Okay. And Mary Stone?
Yes.
And town staff, Martha Taylor?
Yes.
And anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Robert Rosine of Waterstone Engineering?
Yes.
William Henny of Henny and Associates?
Yes, we're here. With my client, Mike DeSantos.
I'm sorry?
I'm here with my client, Mike DeSantos.
Thank you. And Emily Ennis?
I'm here as well.
Oh, you. So this is August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board, and it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter one oh seven, the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, which extends the governor's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access, excuse me, is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://backslashbackslashzoom.us and entering meeting ID eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, or by calling one nine two nine two zero four six zero nine nine U S, New York, and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through the local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may call, may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure, excuse me, an accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone star six to toggle mute unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do throw, do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comments and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function for video conference participants to raise your hand over the bottom of the Zoom window before the photo, below the photo gallery, and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column, and again, afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, the applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, note for each vote taken in the meeting, it will be conducted by a roll call vote. So now turning to the agenda, the first items under submissions and appearances. Robert Rosine, Waterstone Engineering Submission of Special Permit Modification Application for a two point seven nine five megawatt solar energy generating facility, one forty, our Main Street, Byfield. Applicant New Leaf Energy, Inc., formerly Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., owner Karen Yezir, and Cavie, Arcavie, and Yezir, successive trustee of the Ruth A. Yezir Trust. And with that, Mr. Rosine, you have the floor.
Good. Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I think so. Great. Great. All right. Good evening. My name's Robert Rosine with Waterstone Engineering. I've been in front of the board a few times. Nice to see you all again, although in a very roundabout manner. This project is for a modification to the special permit that was voted upon by the Planning Board back in May of two thousand and eighteen. This is for an existing completed project that is a two point eight megawatt ground mounted solar facility. And essentially, we're at the last, last stages of this project, and due to some miscommunication, we, we, there is a need for a a maintenance access road to the point of interconnection that was not included in the original design and the original permit. And what that means is that the, the customer, in this case, Borrego, or actually now New Leaf Energy, needs to be able to provide access for the utility through the, the project to the point of interconnection, which is the transmission corridor. That was not included in the original twenty, sorry, the original twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen approval, both by the state and then, and then here by the, the Planning Board. So we're back in front of you for a special permit modification, with the intentions really of not modify, not really changing anything in the permit, with the, with the one exception of the, of the additional maintenance access road through the rear of the facility. So what this, this project is about is essentially, we will be proposing, or we will be constructing an access road along an existing farm road, an existing cart path, and that has a large wetland crossing, which is a wetland fill location currently. It's about a hundred and thirty-five foot wetland crossing that we will be removing the old cart path that was used back by the farmers back in the day to bring cattle down to the old, the old railroad back down there. So we'll be improving the site from that standpoint by, by removing a wetland crossing and installing a bridge down there. So with that, that is approximately a thousand and thirty-seven foot road that would be installed. It will be widened from a nine to twelve foot cart path to a twelve foot road, and then the installation of a hundred and fifty foot bridge for a project or an access road that will probably never be used. Or I shouldn't say that, but that will be used only on occasion. Along with this, there are a couple of items, obviously, that are both in front of the Planning Board, I'm sorry, in front of the Conservation Commission, and as well as in front of the state. We, there will be approximately a hundred and twenty square feet of permanent impacts, wetland impacts, about four hundred and seventy square feet of temporary impacts, and, and about forty-five hundred cubic feet of wetland fill that will be removed, which includes approximately one thousand five hundred square feet of wetland restoration. Another very important element of this, two other really important elements are the original, the original special permit included a conservation restriction. This is on the, at the Yezir property that is, it was, it was approximately a hundred acres that we were dealing with, and, and so out of that hundred acres approximately, initially, there was about eighty acres that were involved in a, in a full trust that was a conservation trust, of which approximately twelve acres was the solar facility, and the, and the rest was all put into conservation restriction with with Essex County Green Belt, or Essex Green Belt County, I always mix that up, Essex County Green Belt Association, sorry. The land trust. And and, and so there, as I said, there was about twelve acres that was set aside in a lease for the solar facility. The remaining acreage, it was all put into conservation trust. But because the conservation restriction had, has, has been implemented already, it did not include an easement for this maintenance access road, so we've had to go back for a conservation restriction amendment. And for that amendment to occur, we basically have, have to improve the offering in that conservation restriction. So what had been prior an eighty acre conservation restriction is now an eighty-two acre conservation restriction, so it's been increased a little bit. Yeah, with an additional approximately point six acres of, of clearing that, that will be associated with this for the new road. The, the conservation restriction has not yet, or sorry, the amendment has not yet been approved by the state, but it has been approved by the, by the land trust, and it was submitted to the state for review back in April. And maybe the last but not least is this, this type of activity actually is, is, is allowable in that it is a it is allowable under, in terms of wetland impacts, under a three-ten CMR, ten point five-three D. And essentially, what this speaks to is, is utilities being able to construct access to their utility locations, given that there, that there are no other opportunities available. And maybe the last, the last piece I'd like to close with is this project may seem a little crazy to you, and, and it is actually. I will say a bit jokingly that we've all been through the, the, the five stages of grief on this, that the Conservation Commission is going through this right now. And it really, it's a project that seems like there should be an alternative, but there, there really is not. We've had, we've had the state, state senator involved. We've, we've, we've met with National Grid. We've had the, we've, we've, we've had all parties involved and tried in, in great earnest to negotiate with National Grid. And what it simply comes down to is they have a set of standards that was overlooked by the, in the original permit that, that they're unwilling to waver on. And the original plan had been that they would have had maintenance access through the, the the transmission corridor, but their reasoning for it, which, which is, is very simple, that that the transmission corridor itself is not maintained for access around the, you know, at all times during the year, but the facility is. So for example, if there was a power outage, you know, wide, wide scale power outage and some, and they needed to access this, they could count on, on the, the owner, in this case, New Leaf Energy, will, will make sure that the, that these roads are fully accessible all the time so that they would be able to get out to the point of interconnection and do whatever repairs would be necessary. And, and beyond that, there's, there's really, there's really no other alternative, although I'm sure we'll want to have those types of conversations at some point. So with that, maybe I'll pause and open it up to questions.
Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful. I understand we're just on tonight for the formal submission of the application, and then if all is in order, to set a date for a public hearing. Martha, I know you've been over the application. Everything appears to be in order.
I have, and Rob has responded to the comments that I made on the draft, and we received the hard copy submissions today.
All right. Well, let me see if, if the members have any, any questions or comments. Peter, anything? You're muted, Pete.
Yep, thanks. I know questions or comments. I am kind of watching this also for conservation.
Okay. George, anything? Questions?
No questions.
Okay. Leslie, any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Woody, the same question for you. Any questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
And Mary? No, you're all set. All right. At this point, then, I think it would be appropriate to take a motion to vote to accept the special permit modification application. If anyone would care to make that motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Pete. And a second? All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary, your feelings?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the motion to accept the permit, excuse me, the application passes unanimously. Martha, go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. Who, who seconded that motion?
I thought it was George.
George, okay. I heard two voices. Thank you.
Okay. And Martha, I guess we will need to set a public hearing date. Our next meeting is, is September twenty-first. What do we have on for that meeting? Anything?
Right, nothing. I mean, that, that's the first meeting that we, next meeting is actually September.
I'm sorry, what did I say? August?
No, you said September twenty-first. Our next meeting is actually the seventh, but that's too soon, given notification requirements. So the first possibility would be September.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, yeah, so if then I would accept the motion to set the public hearing date for September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven fifteen P M. So, thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. Was that Leslie?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary, anything you'd like to add? Mary, you're, you're in favor as well?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. So I guess we'll see you on the twenty-first.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
And thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is submission of the, of the R, the R A N R Plan for the Witchstone Fire slash Fatherstone. I understand that that plan has not been received, Martha?
That's correct.
Simply take that off the agenda for tonight. Moving on to new business. I'd like to take this out of order and take sixty-eight Green Street first. I think that'll be fairly quick. And I also understand council has a time constraint, so I'd like to move to that. So this is Bill Henny, Henny and Associates, and Michael DeSantos, Crane Properties, sixty-eight Green Street subdivision request for release of Lot One from performance covenant with respect to building permit and for permission to begin site work on lots one and two. So gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I would just like to check with Emily and make sure it's okay if we go out of order. I do have some time before eight P M.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. I appreciate the courtesy.
Thanks so much.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing us tonight. It was relatively short notice with Martha. We, you may recall back in March of last year, Genda Carlo from my office, representing Mike and the Crane Properties, and you spent a fair amount of time reviewing the subdivision approval and the restrictive covenants. The, the highlights of that discussion is that there was a discrepancy between the subdivision approval and the restrictive covenants that the restrictive covenant stated that you couldn't build until you had all your roads done and utilities in. Last March, we were struggling with National Grid, and Mike is here, and he'll speak to it a little bit later. We continue to struggle with National Grid. You did amend or modify to allow him to get a building permit on Lot Three, which has gone along by all reports very, very well, with the exception of National Grid kind of slowing up the works. At this point, we're in front of you now, hoping to get another building permit on another lot, on Lot One, and at the same, basically the same rationale and the same reason that we had last March. And we're, we're also hoping to get permission from the board to start the site work on Lot Two. We feel that starting the site work on Lot Two, there's a lot of efficiencies that can be gained, both for us, the town, and the neighbors. Again, I'll let Mike explain that to you a little bit. I'm happy to review the subdivision plan approval with you. I'm happy to review the restrictive covenants with you. But I think you've been through those last March, and may want to just proceed forward. It's completely up to the board.
Yeah, I recall we dealt with this not too long ago. And the issue is that, that the restrictive covenant prohibits the issuance of a building permit until all of the infrastructures and and I understand from my discussions with Martha that the infrastructure is pretty much there, just National Grid needs to flip the switch. Is that correct? Accurate?
Yeah, yeah. Everything has been installed. All the conduits been laid. It's all been inspected by National Grid. Transformers in, the handhold that's going to power Lot Three and the adjacent barn from the neighbor is also there. We've run the power to the barn because there is an easement with the current service that goes under where the road is supposed to go, and that feeds power to the barn, and the easement states that, you know, we have to supply continuous power to the barn. So that's what's holding us up from finishing the road, because really, that's, that's the only thing we have left, is we need, obviously, National Grid to, to flip the switch, and then we can remove the old pole, remove the service that goes under the road currently, and then finish off the road.
Okay. And you're also looking for permission to start site work on lots one and two. Is that? I'm not sure. Is that necessary?
Yeah, I mean, our, our reasoning there, obviously, the, the biggest priority is to just get going on Lot One so that we can get a building permit and do all the work on Lot One, and, and our thinking with wanting to get at least the site work done on Lot Two is all the machine, if you, if you look at the plan, both those lots sit back on, on the, the land, and the thinking there is, while the machinery is in there, get it all done. There's a lot of dirt that needs to get moved around. Lot Two has a pretty long driveway that goes all the way back, so we were just hoping while, while that machinery is there, just some efficiencies and moving the project along and getting all that done.
Yeah, I actually wasn't very clear in my question. Where I was going with this, do you need, do you need our permission to do that? Not sure this.
I mean, sure. I always rather get permission than beg for forgiveness, is my, my understanding, but you know, if you're saying I don't, then, then I guess we could. I just, you know, we, we want to, we want to get it done. We know those big machines make a lot of noise, and they're not, you know, they're not very nice to look at, so we just want to get them out of there as soon as we can. But I mean, part of that is also, you know, digging that foundation for Lot Two and moving that dirt around, so.
Martha, anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so. I think it's been, I think it's been covered.
Okay. Let me turn to the members. Pete, any questions, comments, concerns? You're muted.
I know. Technology is a little bit draggy here. No, and just for the board's understanding, this went through conservation last night for both lots one and two, and so they were released from conservation last night, so.
Thank you. George, any questions?
No comments.
All right. Leslie?
Nothing.
Woody?
No, good. No questions.
Mary, do you have any questions, comments? Nor do I. So what do we need? I guess we need a motion to release Lot, I'd accept then a motion to release Lot One from so much of the Form D restrictive covenant that prohibits the issuance of a building permit until the construction of the roadway and installation of the municipal utilities are completed. In all other respects, Lot One will continue to be subject to the restrictions of the covenant. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, George, thank you. Pete, I'm, I'm just going to ask, does anyone have any discussion on the motion? Okay. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, your feelings on the motion? And I vote yes as well. So the motion passes unanimously. Now, are we looking? I'm just looking at my notes here. I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Do we need a motion on, on the site work, or you just want to get a, do we just need a sense of the void? I'm looking at you, Martha. You're looking.
I thought you were looking at Michael DeSantos. I mean, to, you know, to be cleanest and clearest, you could get a, do a motion.
I'm sorry?
If it, to be cleanest and clearest, do, do.
All right. Okay. So I would accept the motion then to allow the site work to proceed on lots one and two as requested.
Some moved.
Thank you. I think I heard Pete first, and I didn't hear the second. I'm sorry that someone speak, but I didn't catch who it was. Do we have a second?
Third.
All right. George, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? No. All right. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary, I thought so. Yes, I vote yes as well. So I think, I think you're good to go.
Perfect.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Okay. All right. And now, turning to the progress report on the master plan update. So Emily Ennis, thank you for your patience, and the floor is yours.
It's my pleasure. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and to all the members of the planning board. I'm delighted to present this update to you, and I am just going to share the presentation just one moment. And I'm hoping you can all see that now. So my name is Emily Ennis. I am principal of Ennis Associates. I have been an urban planner and designer for over twelve years now. Began my own firm in two thousand and twenty, and I am headquartered in Byfield, just down the street from Town Hall, at least at the moment. I wanted to update you with where we were on finishing up the master plan. I've been working with town for a couple of months now, and we're making some some, some order out of the different pieces where the plan left off. And it's important to understand that the town of Newbury is not alone in finishing off a plan that started pre-COVID. I'm working with one other town at the moment to do pretty much the same thing. They also went on hiatus, actually, earlier than COVID, and I had two comprehensive plans that were in progress when the pandemic hit, and both were put on hold. So I just wanted you to know, as a town, that you're not alone here. What we're trying to do with this is, first of all, look at data and recommendations that are out of date. A couple of data sources have been updated in the last few years. The U S Census, for example, is partially updated. Not all of the information has been released, but sufficient information to make some changes has been. The town itself has been undergoing some other planning studies, as has the region, especially in terms of the Great Mars Resiliency Report, climate change, and other projections. So the first thing we're doing is looking at the different components that were completed to date and updating data, and therefore, recommendations that might be out of date. We're also continuing the process of creating the plan document. We're also continuing the process of creating the plan document. So when this planning process was put on hold for a little bit, different components of the plan were at different stages. So we are completing those components. I will say the vast majority of the text was there. What wasn't completed was the refining, the looking at all the sections and making sure that everything was internally consistent, bringing it to a consistent final format and layout, making sure that the voice was the same all the way through. Often when people are doing these, towns are doing these comprehensive plans, you have multiple people working on multiple sections. So each section has a voice. It's important to bring that to consistency. And then finally, the, those, those touches that you would put at the end, going back to the survey, going back to the public meetings, just making sure that everything was captured in this company, in this master plan, adding up to date images that represent the town. You'll see a few historic images that I pulled so far. And then resources that are helpful for implementation. So as we get the implementation plan finalized, making sure that, you know, is it a funding resource? Is it a best practice? Is there something that we can add that will help the town during the implementation process? So I wanted to give you an idea today of what the contents will look like as the complete document and a little glimpse of the new format that brings everything together. So this is the current draft table of comments. We're going to be, I'm going to be adding, working with, with Martha and a couple of others, an executive summary that really brings everything together and talks a little bit about what the next steps are, especially post-COVID. And an executive summary is different from an introduction and that an executive summary is a standalone component. So somebody who doesn't want to read the whole plan can get the idea of what is in the plan without, if they don't want to, having to go through. There will be an introduction that was actually part of the original pieces. We're going to expand out the vision and goals. I'm going to show you those today. At least the draft versions of those. Then there's a chapter for each of the elements under section 81D of chapter 41. And then finally, that implementation plan and a new section of tools and resources. We were finding that throughout the different elements, there were certain terms that were more fully defined, that it would make sense to actually put them in an appendix. So that's where those will go. So this is what the draft table of contents looks like, at least as of today, as we're still putting things together. And you can see each section has some smaller components. It's not completely filled out because at the time I, I created this PDF to put in the presentation, I hadn't added some of the sections like mobility. And I should also note that the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is helping us with some of the components that they worked on at the beginning of stages as well. So we're coordinating some updated information from them. This is an example of what the expanded goals will look like. And historic and cultural resources is a little bit more complete at the stage that I, I created this. So you can see we have on the left-hand side, there's just a little blurb that talks about historic and cultural resources in terms of the goals. In this particular one, it's drawing from some of the comments from the public meetings. And then on the right-hand side, we have the first goal HC dash one. And then underneath it, specific strategies or actions. And again, at this stage, these are all draft pulling from what was created originally. Then in the actual element section, again, using historic and cultural resources as an example, you get a much larger overview. In this case, the extract from the history of images of the past, the history of Newbury, a map in there. And then following on from that, the different sections of the plan going into more detail for each of the elements. So in this case, describing the inventory of the historic and cultural assets, and then there are tables further in the document. So the expanded goal section, we'll just have a brief overview of the forward-looking portion of how this plan is looking at each of the elements. And then the element section, the chapters for each have the more in-depth information about existing conditions and trends. So I wanted to share with you where we are with the draft vision. One of the things that's been interesting in pulling out the content, different voices that have is people have different levels of expressing the goals and the actions. So we've been trying to pull out where somebody might have written a paragraph about an action, pulling that into a single statement. One of the things that we noticed in looking at the vision is that was a little general to start with, which is perfectly reasonable for where the document was at the time. You often start out with the general and then try and bring it to the more specific. So in looking at what is, what we've gone through so far is this is the, where it feels like the vision is going. And I wanted to show it to you today. Martha has a copy of this presentation, which I believe she's going to send out. I would love to have feedback from all of you on this vision. And then I'm just going to jump forward briefly because as I was looking at this, there was, especially in the historic section, there was talk about the 350th anniversary and what Newbury had done then. And I did a little math and realized that 2035, which is coming up rapidly, is the town's 400th anniversary. And so setting a framework for understanding, you know, what, what would this town like to accomplish by its 400th anniversary? Seemed a nice way to start thinking about some of the goals and some of the vision components. So throwing that again out there for your, your consideration and comments. And then I'm going to walk you quickly through what the goals, the goals as they stand now look like, and then we can always go back. But just talk to you a little bit about the structure. So each of the seven elements that relate to components of a comprehensive plan or a master plan in 81D are called out by their initials and the goals. So you see the LU dash one, LU dash two, that is the goal level. When you look at LU dash 1.1 or LU dash 2.3, that indicates that's an action or a strategy for land use. So you'll see each of these has its own codes, community service, economic development, historic and cultural resources, housing, natural resources and mobility, which is the chapter 81D talks about transportation. It's really morphed over time and talking with transportation planners to also think about overall mobility. So that includes pedestrian and bicycle as well as vehicular, public and private. So that's why the change of name. So when we look at each of these different levels, and again, you'll have this and I'd be interested in your thoughts. I'll just go back more slowly. What, what you'll see is that first section, that expanded vision and goals where I showed you with the, the historic and cultural that it's broken down. There's also an implementation plan at the end of the document that's more, going to be more of a grid. And that will include partners. So who's responsible for what? The planning board, of course, has the overall responsibility for approving and updating a master plan, but there, and for many of the land use, especially those regulatory ones, has a lot of responsibility. But there are other components of this plan that require input and action by the Conservation Commission, by the Historical Commission, by the Select Board, possibly by other non-town entities as partners. So that goes into the implementation plan, where there are funding sources that would go into the implementation plan. So when we come back around to discuss that, we'll be looking for your comments on that. And then just quickly to wrap up through here, I just want to talk about the next steps and then happy to go back to anything you have question on. So we're meeting with MVPC. I think if it's not next week, it's the following week. We're going to be putting together the final complete draft and getting that to you in mid-September for your review. I'll be back at that point to, to talk you through it and answer any initial questions. And then once you've had a chance to look at it, the idea is to make the draft available for public review. So people can come in and see. Again, we're trying very much to just pull what's been done to date and reorganize it and update it as necessary, but we're not redoing the process. I think it's important to know that we were taking it from where it stopped forward and not going back and redoing other than the, the update of the out of date information. After the public's had a chance to review it, you've had a chance to review it. We'll make any final edits. We'll compile all the public comments into an appendix. This is something that I and other consulting colleagues have done to have a record of public comments. So when it goes to the implementation stage, whoever's doing the implementing can go back and look and see what people were thinking at the time the recommendations were made. And then final review sometime in November, December with acceptance of the plan by yourselves. You have the, the authority under Mass General Law for accepting the plan as the final plan for the community. And then I'll just throw this up here now so it can be up for anybody who might be watching it. If you have any questions after seeing this or listening to our conversation, please contact Martha and there is her email address. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about where we are in the planning process.
All right. Thank you very much, Emily. It's very helpful. Martha, before I turn to the board members and the public for comments, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, I think Emily's done a great, great job of providing an overview. There might be one, one question, which is we did start with another consultant, Community Opportunities Group. And they, they worked with us through the, the initial, you know, the public outreach component of this with focus groups and public forums and interviews and all of that and, and a survey. So all of that information is being pulled into this. Emily has all of that information and is referring to it extensively in terms of what she's, what she's putting together now. They actually, when we were at the point where we're ready to start moving forward with this again, I reached out to Community Opportunities Group and learned that their planners were no longer with them and they're no longer providing planning services. And we were fortunate enough to be able to bring Emily on board to, to finish this for us. Also wanted to mention that Community Opportunities Group was responsible for doing the housing, the economic development and the land use components of the master plan. And we had thought in hindsight mistakenly that updating the natural resources, community facilities and services and the historic and cultural resources would not be not be too heavy a lift. And it turned out that we were really quite mistaken on that. There were a lot of changes being, taking place in terms of community facilities. In the meantime, we, we had the vote on the police station that happened. So we're, we're kind of way beyond that now looking at you know, what happens with Town Hall and the Council on Aging. Natural Resources, I think probably is one that has undergone potentially the biggest change because there's been a lot of planning done through the municipal vulnerability planning process and other, other planning things on resiliency, excuse me, climate change, which we're very fortunate now to be able to bring into, into this, this iteration of the plan. We wouldn't have had that. So I think that that's a real strength at this point. So I have reached out to all the department heads for updates on information regarding their departments as well as Historic Commission, the Recreation Commission. And we're bringing all of that updated information into, into the draft that we're working on now. And as Emily said, we're also coordinating with MVPC. They were responsible for the transportation element, which we're now calling mobility and getting updates from them on the data that they used for the previous draft. And they've also been very active in economic development initiatives, which were not going on at, at the time. So looking for some input from them, just to make sure that we've got, you know, appropriate data and resources. So Emily, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
I think that pretty much covers it. Part of the work that I'm doing is just coordinating the responses that Martha gets back, just to make sure that throughout the plan, again, that we have the, the updated information and that's, it's all in that singular voice.
Wonderful. Thank you both. Great information. Let me turn to the board members. Now, Pete, anything that should, like to add, any questions, comments?
Thanks. Thanks, Larry. Emily, I think it's great to have you on board and I know that the planning board will appreciate the efforts that you're doing. And it's great introduction to the board to, to have this kind of overview with the understanding that you'll be coming back to the board maybe mid-September-ish with the start of a draft, then October, probably looking for public comments and then kind of buttoning those coordinating all those by November. So it looks like we have a good timetable over the next few months to keep this process and go. So very glad that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. George, do you have anything?
Oh yes, one. Thank you, Emily, for your presentation. I was just chewing around an idea in my head. I'm not looking for an answer to this at all. But would it make any sense for departments and department heads and the planning board to overview keeping a yearly sort of journal on what's going on for that year and what has happened? And bring it forward year by year. So when we get to the next planning or the next need to have a master plan prepared, we will have some documents to look at as we go along, even some diary to use in looking forward for information we need to implement and insert in the plan.
I think that's a really interesting idea. I have not heard anybody bring forward something like that before, but it's, that's intriguing.
Well, it establishes some ongoing history. Whatever happened yesterday is history. And we're looking forward, whatever is tomorrow is the future. And I think that if we have a diary like that, just that concept of a diary to put together annually, just makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Very interesting proposal, George. Thank you. Leslie, do you have anything you'd like to add or ask?
I'd just like to say thank you to Emily as well. It was an interesting presentation. It was clear-cut and easy to, to understand. I look forward to receiving the copies of the drafts to review them once again.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, would you have anything?
It was a great presentation, Emily. Thank you. And actually, George's idea was kind of nice, something to think about. And other than that, no, I look forward to seeing we come for us in the future to review.
Thank you, Woody. And Mary, do you have anything?
Emily, thanks a lot. This is great. The, the issue of a master plan for Newbury has always been, you know, has been in my mind for a long time since I moved here six years ago. I did a master plan in Dedham and it is very, very important for the understanding of what we really want for this town. There are three different parts of the town that are all very, very different. And that's a challenge. It's a great challenge. That's what makes this town terrific. I think it's important for two things to happen. Number one is to be sure that the public understands what the master plan is and why it is important. Because when you say master plan or you say strategic plan, people start snoring. It's like, I'll look at that. This is a viable, living, breathing document that changes constantly with the town's needs. And so I want, at the outset, I'm very thought through strategically from a communication standpoint, Emily, to be sure that the public understands what it is, why it's important and why we need their input. That they are part of this moving plan, that it's never going to be static. And so their input is, is critical with the viability of the master.
Great. Thank you, Mary, for those thoughts. And I'll echo what everyone else said. I think it was a great presentation and extremely helpful. Martha, do we have any questions from the public?
We have one hand raised. Jack Riddicki would like to speak.
Okay, Jack?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I was having trouble with my connection and I apologize in advance. Understanding the administrative updates that are, that are coming as presented this evening, as the master plan should involve citizen input. My recollection is that the citizens survey done by community, the community group cited by Martha, was done in 2016. So that would be the last direct citizen input that I know. The last master plan committee meeting was back in 2018 or so, 19, possibly. I'd have to go to YouTube. My concern presently is there going to be any effort toward asking the public in any way, shape or form, in the form of a new survey or some sort of ask of input as we're clearly six years away from the last time it was done on a master plan, which I would think citizen input should be most current. Thank you. on a master plan, which I would think citizen input should be most current. Thank you.
Would either of you, Emily or Martha, like to speak to that?
Martha, do you want me to describe the survey and how that would work for the comment? And then you can chime in.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So Jack, that's a great question. What Martha and I discussed was obviously having something for people to react to. So that would be the draft. Rather than just put it out and say, here it's available, email your comments. That's not really very proactive in terms of getting comments to your point. So what we were going to do was actually set it up so that the draft is accessible online and, and that it would then be attached to a survey. We've used Survey Monkey for the past. Some people use Google Forms. And that would allow people, A, to go through the document and input any of their comments on the document. So we can collect those together. But it also allows us the chance to ask a few questions at the same time. We haven't yet developed those questions. But I think that's one way of getting, getting it, first of all, the document into the hands of people so that they can read it and respond to it, and then giving them the appropriate measure or the appropriate ability to be able to respond to it. Obviously, people who don't work well with online surveys, not everybody is, is technologically advanced, can either email or mail in comments as well. But that's one way to easily get it in. And then Martha and I also talked about a public presentation. So again, we want to have the draft in hand before we do that. But your, your comments are well noted. So appreciate them.
I, I appreciate your, your answer too. And in that timeline, with those considerations in mind, it would be incumbent to begin that process because citizen response in the town is notably lagging constantly. And to expect a genuine return of citizen review and response in the timeframe of its August, mid-August now. And you're looking for a final document in November, I submit that's a very aggressive ask. And I think again, citizens should have the greatest voice of the guidance of master plan and should be the priority going forward. Because administrative views understandably are, are of their own and citizens' input should be taken into consideration while administrators take their concerns into administration. It's a mutually feed upon situation that seems to be just one way for now. And I would look forward to the documents and questions coming forward and I'll be certainly a part of the process if anyone was looking for a volunteer in that vein. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Jack. Any questions? Anyone else, Martha?
No, I don't see anybody. Oh, Jen Forrest.
Hi.
All right, go ahead, please.
How's everyone? I'm just curious if this is going to also be hard copy available. We know lots of people in this town are not good with electronics and still need paper. So were we thinking of having hard copies of this available at town hall for people to get them so that they can read them as opposed to doing things online?
Just to clarify, are you thinking of the, the final, the draft for review and comment or the final?
Yeah, the, the review. So that people can say, well, why are they doing that? I don't know anything about this. And then, then we have the whole ring around the rosy of how we didn't know anything was going on thing that usually happens. So trying to avoid that.
I think we haven't really talked about exactly the format, but I would imagine that we would, and I think we did this previously with the 2006 master plan is, is put copies in strategic places like the town hall, the library. You know, a few others that Council on Aging and some others that seem like they would be good places for people to access hard copies and review those if they didn't want to do it online. As well as with the final document, once it's been approved and accepted.
Being, speaking for myself and being one of those electronically challenged persons, I'll be looking for hard copying myself.
I like to, I like to have something to scribble on, you know, so I can do it electronically, but I still want to make notes by hand. I can't, all the colors and trying to make notes makes me crazy, but.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
It must be us, you know, dial phone people who have these problems. Okay. Well, that sounds good. So as long as we have some way of notifying and hitting all three villages, so we don't have any prejudice going, we'll be good.
We will do very good, you know, outreach through all the social media mechanisms that we have and, and bulletin boards and all of that and get copies in, in, in all three sections of town and in places where they're readily accessible.
Awesome. And I did, we had a meeting Thursday night, last Thursday. So I handed out all the copies that you gave me, Martha, to all of our members to review.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? Any other questions, Martha?
I'm not seeing any now. No.
Okay. Well, then I guess we can move on. Emily, thank you very, very much. This has been extremely helpful.
It was my pleasure.
Going forward, working with you forward further and moving this process along. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Okay. Under old business, we have nothing. Under liaison reports, Leslie, select board?
The only thing I have from the select board was because they're on summer schedule is there is going to be a, a select board public hearing notice was presented in the Daily News on eight, eight and eight fifteen for, I'll read it to you. Notice for residents of the town of Newbury and others interested, other interested persons. Please note that on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022 at seven fifteen, the Newbury Select Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Office's 12 Kent Way by Field Mass zero one nine two two to consider an application submitted by Damon Jusperson for Marsh Meadow Lane by Field Mass for a special permit to use the existing barn at One Marshmellow Lane by Field, Massachusetts. Assessors back R 22 lot 10 in the agricultural residential district for commercial and entertainment purposes. Property owner, Elena M. Jusperson Trust, Elena M. Jusperson trustee. The application is on file for review during regular business hours at the town hall with the town clerk and in the office of the select board, 12 Kent Way by Field Mass. And for any more information, contact the select board at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three oh one. And all persons interested in wishing to be heard on the special permit application should appear at the time and place designated above. Signed, Alicia Greco, Chair, Newbury Select Board, eight, eight, eight fifteen twenty-two.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
As far as the ZBA goes, their regular monthly meeting would, would have been tomorrow night, but they didn't have any public hearings. So that's been, that's been canceled. So I have nothing to report. And Conservation Commission?
Hey, Larry. Last night we met sixty-eight Green Street as we indicated was released. One, one forty main has been continued and Martha did forty-two middle that have come. An application ever come through for us?
I was actually going to report on that in my planning director's report.
Well, I can tell you that it cleared conservation last night.
Yeah, I talked with Sam about that. I got a draft A and R today from, from Ed Dixon. So I compared some notes with, with Sam and assuming that revisions can be made in time for our next meeting, which probably have it.
And Sam's been doing some stellar work and reorganizing stuff and putting together some tools to, to help the commission work smoothly. So it's good.
Very good. Set it for Concom. And MBPC, Martha, do you have anything?
I don't. They're, they're on summer schedule as well. The commission won't be meeting again until September. And they're, they're very busy doing a lot of work and providing support for us, but no, no committee meetings or anything to report on.
Very good. Thank you. And that would bring us to the planning directors report.
So good things to report. First of all, we have the state DHCD released the final, final guidelines for MBTA communities last, on the tenth. So as you may recall, the requirements, we were considered to be a commuter rail community. The requirements for us were very stringent. Seven hundred, we, we needed to zone to allow for seven hundred and fifty multifamily dwellings, units by right with a minimum of fifty, fifty acres. The state received, there are a hundred and seventy-five MBTA communities. The state received over four hundred letters. They've digested it all and come back with really quite a, quite a different scenario. I had written a lengthy letter with concerns about the impact of this on Newbury. We also signed on to a letter that was initiated by the town administrator in Middleton. And it seems like they did pay some attention. So we've been, I'll say, downgraded from a commuter rail community to an adjacent small town. And instead of needing to zone for seven hundred and fifty multifamily units, we are required to zone for a minimum of a hundred and fifty-four, which is quite a, quite a difference from what we had before. There is no, no minimum land area that we need to set aside. They determined that there are sixty-nine acres of developable station area, they call it, but we do not need to restrict our district to that area. So town council is going to provide an overview for us of exactly what all of this means, but it, it appears that we, we aren't required to do as many units and we have a lot more flexibility in determining what the best location for those units in town will be. The action plan is required by January thirty-first of next year, but as a, an adjacent small town, we actually don't have to achieve compliance until December thirty-first of twenty-five. So that's a longer timeframe than we originally had. So again, we'll be getting our guidance from, from town council and start working towards at least putting together an action plan by the end of January for submission. And I'll keep you posted on, on, on all of that. As Pete was mentioning, the Concom has approved proposed project at forty-two Middle Road. The impact of this for us is it's, it's a property that has a substantial amount of wetland going through it. And an A and R plan is going to be coming to us. And the big question is, does it have viable frontage for the second lot? And the Concom has determined that, that the buildable area of that second lot is accessible across the wetland. So the determination would be yes, it does have viable frontage. So I'll need to review the plan and make sure it meets our submission requirements, but I expect it will probably be in place for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting. Sam and Peter Burnett and I also had a meeting with the owner of two Old Point and eight R Old Point Road on the Sunset Club. As you recall, we approved, we granted site plan approval last year for that. And they are now looking to put a structure in the corner where the old service station was in the house, essentially a pavilion, which will allow people to sit there out of the elements, but a fairly bare bone structure up on pilings. We talked about the permitting process. It looks like it's going to have to go through ZBA. It'll be a major modification to site plan review and also modification to the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions, probably an amendment as opposed to a new, new filing, but that's not entirely clear. We also TJ Melton and I met with the fire department to talk about fire access for seven and seventeen Marsh Ave. And we also met and met with the fire department with Michael McNiff and Bob Griffin to discuss fire access and especially the, the common driveway for a hundred, for one seventy Orchard Street. So I think they'll be making some modifications to those plans and move forward with submitting the subdivision applications. And that's it for me.
Great. Well, that's, you've been busy. I thought you weren't always busy, but.
Thanks, Martha. And that's great news.
Yeah, I'm very pleased about the MBT.
That was great work.
Terrific.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm glad it seems to have had an effect anyway.
That would be just devastating to this town. Throw them out to play now. Just took the town and made a difference.
Yeah, I mean, to have a quarter, have to zone for a quarter of our total housing units as multifamily.
That was a little daunting, wasn't it?
Very daunting, very daunting, given all our, all of our constraints.
Yeah, thanks, Martha.
A good work. It was a great letter.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I move on, anyone have any other questions, Martha? Not seeing any. On the meeting minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to review the May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes?
Yes.
I will have to say I was not able to for last night's meeting or today. My apologies.
Would you prefer we hold that then for, for the next meeting?
I, I'm not sure if other people have.
Well, I, I've reviewed it and have, have no issues.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, if you, if you want to just abstain, Pete, that's fine. Was everyone else had an opportunity to review them in May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one? I'm sorry, George?
Yeah, I have not, but I'd be happy to abstain.
Okay. Well, we got three members. Leslie and Woody, you comfortable going forward? All right. Now, well, I, I have nothing. Do either of you have any amendments, changes? No. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Woody, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right. I'm not gonna, I, I don't think we have any discussion. So Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
I shall abstain, sir.
And George, how do you vote on the motion?
I abstain.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary? And I vote yes as well. So the motion passes with three in favor and two abstentions. And April, the April twentieth, twenty twenty-two motion or minutes were not ready for tonight. So we'll look at those in another time. And lastly, if you recall, some time back, I was given the authority to approve certain meeting minutes. And if I can, with Martha's help, and if I can find my notes, I'll tell you which ones. And so we have reviewed and approved the minutes from July third, two thousand nineteen, July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and August seventh, two thousand and nineteen. So those have been approved and don't require a vote tonight.
Thank you very much, Larry.
Great.
Very good. So that's, that's it for the agenda unless anyone has anything else they want to add?
We, we do have a raised hand. Would you like to?
Oh, sure.
That's Mr. Riddicki.
Yep. Go ahead, Jen.
Thanks again. I've discussed this with Martha, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. The liaison report mentioned it as well. And the seeking of a special permit at One Marsh Meadow for entertainment and commercial purposes. I know for the board, that's an OSRD, part of an OSRD that was granted by the planning board. I submit to you that the spirit of the OSRD, the notion as I read it, would generally not allow for a commercial or entertainment enterprise to be smack center of an OSRD. As an example, I would submit to you that the Witchstone Current Property OSRD Development on Coleman has a barn. If they If they, if you found as a board that that applicant was now seeking a special permit to use the barn for commercial or entertainment purposes via special permit by the select board, I would think you would all take umbrage at that as a near violation of the spirit of the OSRD. I submit to you that a commercial and in in an entertainment enterprise at Marsh Meadow uh would be a severe impact to the actual residential promises of the, of the bylaw and as was granted under the auspices of that OSRD. Um I know that it's currently on the select board per interpretation by the building inspector as the zoning um officer of town and as well for discussions with Martha. But I would think the board at large um would at least wish to review the matter and in the, under the scope of the existing OSRD as was granted. Because clearly that uh the zoning sought is nothing less than a spot zone within your OSRD.
Larry, Larry, I'm go- I I'm going to interrupt here. This is not an agenda item, so I don't think this is to be discussed at a board level. If this, if there's a concern, have the concern uh uh directed to uh to Martha. Martha can circulate it back, but this is not on our agenda and I don't think there should be a discussion taking place about it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I I I take your point. Um and uh and and Pete makes a valid point. Um I I will say this, um though, and just in general, um that um we've been advised uh on any number of prior occasions by town council that that this board uh is not an enforcement authority, that once we issue a decision, um we're done. Uh in other words, to to put it another way, we don't have the uh the authority to direct someone to file a petition with this board. That's the building, that's within the building commissioner's purview. And if someone feels that that the building commissioner should take certain action, then that person can petition the building commissioner and uh there's an an appellate process uh from that. So uh uh gi- given uh, given that this is not on the agenda and really is not within our jurisdiction, um I I think we'll probably just end the discussion on that. Okay, um that said, uh if there's no other uh business for the board, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh thank you. Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Uh any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, thank you.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Good night. Mary, you good to go? Okay, and I vote yes. So uh the motion to adjourn is unanimous, passes. Thank you all and good night.
Good night everyone. Thanks very much. Thank you.